Okay, uh, today's Wednesday, September 3rd, 2014. The time is 10 o'clock. I call the meeting of the Montague County Commission to order. Would everyone please stand for a moment of silent meditation and pledge to the flag? Thank you.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Diane.
Today we have 38 exemptions, fifty-eight thousand seventy-three dollars and twenty-three cents for tax years 2011, 12, 13, and 14. We need to create statements for tickets 11256, 11257, 11765, 7936, and 9237. Also, replacement tickets for those same numbers because they are handwritten and may be replaced. We have fiduciary orders of September 3rd and approval of services for Lynn Crane, Cynthia Stafford, and George Armstead. General County Fund expenditures, two hundred thousand one oh seven forty-eight. General County Purchasing Card, sixteen thousand nine twenty-eight eighty-three. Coal Severance Fund, twenty-three thousand one forty-one twenty-eight. Kent Muffley, twenty thousand six seventy-seven seventy-eight. Chestnut Ridge Park, two thousand sixty-two twenty. Mason Dixon Park, two thirty-seven seventeen. Mason Dixon Park Purchasing Card, thirty-seven ninety-five. magistrate court fund, thirty-three dollars. Nine One One Purchasing Card, two eighty-one thirty-three. Nine One One Cash, one thousand three forty-seven forty-five. The total, three sixty-five, four forty-four, forty-seven.
Move for approval. Second, I have a motion in the second on favor. Say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Renata.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have two items. Let's do your reimbursement request first. I have a reimbursement request for the HUD grant for the city of Morgantown. That is for M.I.Y.S.P., month of July, 2014, one thousand three eleven thirty-one. It's the only reimbursement I have today.
Move for approval. Second, I have a motion in the second on favor. Say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Uh, the Governor's Office of Economic Opportunity has requested a grant amendment for the Emergency Solutions Grant that we were working off of in fiscal year 2014. They want to extend the grant period because there are some organizations that have not used all of their funding, so they're going to extend the grant period for one year so that everybody can use their money. So I just, this is going to extend the grant till June 30th of 2015.
Set move for approval. Second, I have a motion in the second on favor. Say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Thank you, Renata.
Thank you.
Okay, we have to wait for the public hearing. That's up till 10:30 on the county tow policy. We have any correspondence?
I have one email from Don Reiki. Um, he is retiring and he is now resigning from the Route 2 I-68 authority effective yesterday.
Is that why I got a letter inviting me to come over there to their meeting?
Perhaps.
That's probably what happened. I never, I didn't even know who the group was and they said it was important that I participate in this. Don must have volunteered me.
Maybe he did.
Unless Tom.
No, I'm not interested at all.
You're not interested in?
Except where they have trucks, right?
Sixty-eight, it's to run sixty-eight over to New Martinsville. The idea. To, uh, over to the river. Okay.
Are you willing to serve on that?
Do you see any other volunteers? Do you want to do it?
None.
How about you, Mike? You're there, you're here smiling.
Right.
You know, that's.
I think Diane would be a wonderful child.
Yes, and a lot.
Okay, no other correspondence? Okay, unfinished business. Application for payment number five, Masaro Corporation for Justice Center.
This is our next payment on the Justice Center, one million seven hundred eighty-nine thousand one hundred eighty-four dollars and seventy cents. This is coming from our.
Their bonds.
Yes.
A move that we pay the large amount.
Now, second, I have a motion in the second on favor. Say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. That puts us, uh, gives us a balance of twelve million dollars on that project. So we're about halfway spent out of the bond. Okay, uh, any other unfinished business? Okay, new business. Withdrawal from Benefits Assistance Corporation to SVG Dental and Vision. You want to explain a little?
That's just an announcement that we are withdrawing from Benefits Assistance Corporation, which we've had our Dental and Vision insurance with for several years. Appears this plan will be better for the employees at the same cost or a little less to the commission. So we can give sixty days' notice to Benefits Assistance Corporation and begin new cooperation another course. They'll begin to enroll employees over the next month or so.
Yeah, I'll expand on that a little bit. We reviewed, we reviewed the plan. I don't have it in front of me. I wish I did right now, but it's a, it's a, uh, quite an increase in benefits to the individuals, both in vision and dental care. Plus, the other, the other big advantage of it is if anyone tried to use our vision and dental, most of the times, practically all the time, you have to pay for it and then you have to send it in. Under, under this, if you go to preferred provider, providers, which they had, yours is on it, wasn't it? There was, they have thousands of people in this new plan and it will mean no additional cost to, to any of the employees with major increase in benefits. So, uh, we probably should have a motion to recognize or withdraw.
A move that we withdraw from the Benefits Assistance Corporation to, to SVG.
Aye, second that. Uh, any discussion?
Just, and clarification, there was a little additional cost, but from the other program and we're paying that additional rate, the, the county commissioners, uh, the department, so therefore, we're also paying the increase, but they're also getting so many more benefits out of this program. So I believe once they see that, they're going to be very pleased, the employees.
Bill, do you have any discussion?
Yeah, the one comment I have is I just want to, I would like to make sure that there's provisions in place that notification will be given to the employees so that they can, to their service provider, and make sure that the buildings are proper.
Yes, that was, uh, that would be the follow, that would be the follow-up with this notice that the, um, provider would, would come in and actually meet with each and every employee and explain exactly how the new benefit works.
Okay, that's awesome.
Okay, I have a motion in the second on favor. Say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passed.
Just for additional information, SVG is Shenandoah Valley Group.
Okay.
That's the official name.
Right, right. So, over, over the next sixty days, because we have to give sixty days, he'll be in here to meet with all the employees.
Yes, and agent will be.
Yeah. So that, those, those will be set up and the departments will be notified. Okay, proclamation for suicide prevention.
Not sure that anyone's coming today.
No one.
You'll be presenting this to the senior center next Tuesday morning.
Pardon?
You'll be presenting this to the senior center next Tuesday morning.
I will be?
Yes, you will.
I'm not going to read it.
I will be. Okay. Is there anything else I need to sign?
Not yet.
Okay, well, um, would you, would you read it for us?
Sure. I don't expect anyone to, we'll go ahead with it.
Sure.
Whereas suicide is the tenth leading cause of death in the United States and the third leading cause of death among individuals between the ages of fifteen and twenty-four. Whereas suicide is now the eleventh leading cause of death in the state of West Virginia and the second leading cause of death among people from the age of fifteen to twenty-four in West Virginia. Whereas there has been a reported eighty-three deaths by suicide in Montaguity County since 2002. Whereas adults in West Virginia reported a higher than average prevalence of having serious thoughts of suicide in the past year. Whereas in the United States, one person dies from suicide every thirteen point three minutes. And whereas it is estimated that four point seven three million people in the United States have lost a loved one to suicide. Whereas fifty point eight percent of people who die by suicide use a firearm and guns stored in the home are used for suicide forty times more often than self-protection. Whereas the overall suicide rate in our country increased in 2011. And whereas the stigma associated with mental illness and suicide discourages persons at risk for suicide from seeking life-saving help and further traumatizes those who have lost a loved one to suicide. Whereas statewide suicide prevention efforts should be developed and encouraged to the maximum extent possible. Whereas the organizations such as the West Virginia Council for the Prevention of Suicide, the Adolescent Suicide Prevention and Early Intervention Program, and regional prevention coalitions are dedicated to reducing the frequency of suicide attempts and deaths and the pain of those affected by suicides of loved ones through recreational programs, research projects, intervention services, and bereavement services. Now therefore, the Montaguity County Commission does hereby proclaim the week September 7th through September 13th a suicide prevention week and asks that all citizens be aware of friends or family who may be at risk for suicide and seek the help and support needed to them, September 13, 2014.
Okay, that's the suicide prevention proclamation.
Move for approval of the proclamation.
Second, I have a motion in the second on favor. Say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. This is, uh, this is timely and, uh, you know, it's, it's a troubling thing and, uh, Robin Williams, who's my age, of course, grew up in the shock of, of, of his suicide, sort of struck me in the fact that, that just because someone is functioning, going about their business and even rather successful, does not take them away from the dangers of deep depression that no one knows about. A lot of times, the depression is hid behind that manic activity where they're out and doing things successfully, but they might be deeply depressed. It's a, it's a major, uh, it, it's a major illness and I praise those people that are working to identify it. Any comments?
No, it's something unfortunately after thirty-six years as a guidance council, we dealt with and it, and it is a growing problem. And all, I would just say that if individuals have a concern or someone sees a concern of a, a family member that they get, they get them help. And I think that's something that we kind of don't do and we need to do more of that. There's plenty of programs in this community to help individuals and hopefully, we can get them the help they need.
Bill, do you want to comment? Bill?
Yes. Uh, you know, it's no question that it's a very traumatic experience for any family or friends or loved ones and a person that seeks that kind of remedy to, to life's worries and concerns and problems. And, uh, I, I think that we couldn't have a more worthy effort in, in any area than to prevent that from happening. And I agree with you, Alvin, that the people that are committed and dedicated to helping prevent suicide, uh, really need a pat on the back and are serving a useful purpose to, to all of us, even for some of us who at the present time may not even know that.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Set date for public auction of surplus vehicles, 10:00 AM, September 26, 2014. Is that the date that was chosen?
Yes, move that we set the date for the public auction of surplus materials on September 26, 2014 at 10 o'clock AM.
Okay, I'll second that. Now, uh, is there advertisements done as to the actual, what is available and how does this work? Bobby's not here to explain.
No, he's actually at the meeting for the, it's the mandatory pre-bid on the paving and utilities for Montu.
Oh, okay.
He was there this morning. There are eleven vehicles that have been proclaimed surplus because they're inoperable, basically. Some have been, two have been kept for parts and we can use. Of those eleven, they will all be at the county garage for public review from noon until four on Wednesday, the 25th, I believe, or close, the day before the auction. I think the auction's Friday, that would be Thursday. This will be advertised twice in the newspaper. There, as is, I think we'll start bidding at three hundred fifty thou, three hundred fifty dollars.
Three hundred fifty thousand, I like that. You'd sell eleven of those, we could take care of some of these other bills we're paying.
Last time we did very well. We had twenty vehicles and we actually made fifteen thousand dollars.
Wow. Well, that's good. We have a motion in the second on favor. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passed. So the date for the auction is September 26, 2014 at 10:00 AM. And it will be advertised. Any other new business? Nothing? Okay, uh, reports from elected officials. Mark, do you have anything to add?
No, nothing to add, sir.
Want to praise you again on the work you're doing.
No, thank you.
And your staff.
I also want to thank you. I heard you on the radio last week and you did an exceptional job. In fact, a number of the people commented to me in my neighborhood that they were real pleased, they had a better understanding of what was going on. I think a lot of times with taxes, no one, I think they don't know enough and, and they get very scared. And I think as long as more information's out there, I think we're doing a, and I think you're doing a great job and I appreciate that.
Thank you all for your comments too.
And your staff, make sure they.
Yes.
Kelly, you representing the sheriff today?
Yes, I am.
Okay, you're going to fill us in on everything, right? You're going to take care of the, the truck solution and everything, right? You got it all figured out?
Actually, I have, I have nothing to say today. We were extremely busy last month in the tax office, so.
Hopefully, good.
Oh, yes, yes.
Good.
We had record high collections last month.
Fantastic.
Oh, that's good. Everyone taking advantage of their discount.
Yes.
Well, that's good. I saw them lined up down there. Okay, uh, Mayor Johnson, do you have anything, sir?
No, I don't, uh, just wondering when Bill is going to be back.
Bill's right here.
Oh, I know.
Right, he's right here.
He struck him.
Believe me, I am there in spirit.
There you go. Okay, uh, reports from county commissioners.
Uh, two. First of all, um, knowing the family, uh, I'd like to say on behalf of the county commissioners, we would like to send our thoughts and prayers out to the Stewart family. Uh, they're the family that just lost their son as he was heading to the bus stop and it's just a very sad, sad situation. And hopefully, this is the one and only time, well, I'll have to hear about this, but it's just a very difficult situation for everyone involved. The, the second thing I want to say is that, uh, let's see how it says. Since we are an arm of the State Department, um, and at last night's meeting of city council, more questions have been raised than answers. And rather than come up with any ideas ourselves, we, we're going, I would like to wait and see how the state and the state DOH is going to, uh, deal with, with the situation. It really puts the county commissioners in an awkward situation between the city and the state and the funds, uh, both state and federal funding. Hopefully, and I wish we would have been able to work a solution out together, Wes Nugent was on the radio and I, I support what he stated. Um, I agree with his comments and hopefully, we can work this out and get a better picture and get some answers to many of the questions and concerns that have now been raised. And that's it.
Bill, do you have anything?
I just wanted to share with Tom that, you know, in growing up, uh, when I would become, start out as an observer of a disagreement between two parties, uh, usually after the fact I realized I should have stayed an observer because I didn't have to be involved in, and I think we need to be very cautious with this issue, that we, our position may be the best position of waiting to see where the dust settles between the two parties rather than making a three-party issue.
Yeah.
I would agree with that, Bill. I would, I would agree with that. I, I, they, uh, you know, our, our, our effort, uh, or my effort in talking to the city manager and some council members and the mayor was to try to offer myself as a mediator to the fact that they, they chose not to, they chose not to utilize me in that fashion. So, I'm like you, when, when they took that position, I just stepped back from it and just, let's wait and see, let's wait and see how it pans out.
Yeah, I think it's, it's ultimately going to be a, a decision of the courts anyway.
Right, yeah, it certainly is, certainly is. Do you have anything else, Bill?
No, that's, uh, I'm glad I'm making a step closer to being there in person and I can't tell you, uh, how anxious I am to get back.
We're, we're anxious to have you back too because Diane, she comes up with new letters every day with all these numbers on it and she covers her hands over it. I can't tell you what it is, just sign, so.
Way to go, Diane.
Okay, um, I don't think I, I didn't have anything else today. Let's see, we got another six minutes. Do we have comments from the public?
Yes.
Is this time for a foot?
Yes, sir. You need to write, uh, state your name and your address for the record so we know.
My name is Joe Martin Hallen.
Thank you, Joe.
My name and address?
Yes.
1036 Ashton Drive. Morgantown, West Virginia, 2650, whatever. Okay, you want me to start now?
Yes, it's your time, sir.
If anybody, I don't have an opinion on three, but this deals with one of your favorite subjects, trucks. I live off of 73. You're familiar with 73?
Yeah, you could sit down.
Yes, you could sit down.
Sure, or sit down.
You could, come on up to the table and sit down. Make it easy.
Sure.
I live off of Route 73, about two miles south of the beginning, the tip of 73. The tip starts at the Morgantown Motel. And I have to tell you, dealing with the Department of Transportation is, ah, I put their mission statement on top of that paper. The West Virginia Department of Transportation mission is to be, is to responsibly provide a safe, efficient, and reliable transportation system. I'm concerned about the safe part. I-73 is not safe from the northern tip of it to Goshen Road is one big pothole. And I have described in some of the things. Coming up to this meeting, there's a bend down by the Elite Club and there's a big pothole.
Right there.
And a truck went and missed that pothole and I'm coming north on that road and I came close to being clipped again. When I got close to getting clipped with my seventeen-year-old friend in the car, I got ticked off. And that's why I'm doing this. And I'm trying to get information and I can't. Uh, that road has, is narrow in some places. I have measured it, I look like an idiot, my wife calls me that. I go out and measure this lane, the southbound lane, that's the only lane that the trucks travel. I have measured their truck lane at one hundred inches and the trucks are one hundred two inches. An interesting thing happens at the underpass or the overpass, the 79 overpass, driving up there last week, school bus going one direction, right in that narrow area, and a truck, I don't know how they didn't size it or deter it. I mean, there couldn't have been more than inches between the edge of the road. I put a paper, a picture in the paper, one of the red edges of the road that are worn down. It is thirty yards long, fifteen inches to twelve inches deep. If you go off the edge of that road, you are in terrible trouble. The road is dangerous. If you look at the map, I'll show you the problem here. The second page is a map. It can see, you can see where 68 comes over and meets I-79. What's happening, these big trucks are coming on 68. They are going north on 117, on 119, then cutting back on 73. The stars are the route. That route is, uh, seven point one miles. Okay? If the truck stayed on 68 and went over to 79, down to Goshen Road, it'd be four and a half miles. They're making a longer, longer trip going up to 73, plus the road, which is terrible. Now, I assume, I talked to a truck driver and he said the reason they do that is they don't want to get a ticket on 79. Now, 79 and 68 are both interstate highways, they both have the same weight limitation. So if those trucks are getting off of 68 to get onto 73, which has a higher weight limit, which is absolutely crazy, that means they're already overweight on 68.
Right, exactly.
But they're, for some reason, they're afraid of going down that four, that little two or three mile strip on 79. And I, I asked this, I've called the state police, I've talked to the state police, nothing they can do. However, the Department of Transportation says that the state police are part of the law enforcement agency. And they, and the state police say they can't win. Now, I just got information today.
The state trooper is situated here too.
Okay. I want that state trooper, you know, you see where the six.
Sitting there on a regular basis.
Where 68 meets, uh, 119, that's where I'd like a state trooper to be sitting. Why aren't they sitting on 68?
Well, that's a good point, mhm.
Because if they're enforcing it down there, they should be enforcing it on 68. I have some guesses, but I'm not going to speculate. Okay? But anyway, they all, they, obviously, they want to get onto one, uh, they want to get onto 73 and they're headed toward Fairmont. And that Goshen Road exit is just about meets right with, um.
Yeah, right on 73.
And the Goshen Road, uh, once you get south of Goshen Road, the road is not too bad. 73, uh, they have some shoulders down there. They have, well, the roads are a little bit wider, they're in better condition.
Yeah, flatter ground.
So, I, and yeah, I have a fact sheet, the next sheet, I just, I mentioned a couple of these already. The maximum weight limit is the same on 68 and 79. Why they insist on coming up to Smithton Road except to avoid that state trooper who should also be on 68 once in a while? Why the weight allowance on Route 73 is higher than the interstates? I know why that is the case, but this is a special safety issue. There are bus stops all up and down 73, kids getting in and off buses during the blessing hours.
See, that's what drives me nuts about this weight limit thing. You know, you bring up a good point and that's something that we may deal with and I may talk to the County Commissioners Association about. If the interstate weight limit is necessary to maintain the roads of whatever purpose they have, why wouldn't our state roads have the same weight limit because they're not built as well as the, the interstates? Why would our secondary roads be higher? Doesn't make any sense, Bill.
The one explanation I got was that this was done for the, in the southern part of the state, the coal haulers don't have as many, um.
Interstate routes.
Yeah, they just don't have the, the column. And evidently, wherever the law was passed, it covers everything. And I'm just, and I'm just becoming aware, evidently haulers have to have weight cards or bill of laden. When they get loaded up, wherever they get loaded, they're weighed. And that weight has to be somewhere either on their bill of laden or on a weight card. And when I talked to the state, the state trooper, he said that they couldn't stop them. Well, I don't accept that answer. You know, I can sit there, you can watch them getting off of 68 to avoid, to get onto a road that has a higher weight. They know that these trucks have a higher weight than is allowed on the interstates, but nothing's being done except forcing them up onto 73, creating a terrible problem. When I first moved on 73, I lived in subdivision, I was a thirteenth, my wife and I were the first thirteenth house to be in there. Now, I don't know how many, we have hundreds of houses. And a number of kids driving, I know they all have a driver's license, but that road is a challenge for people who have. But that road is a challenge for people who have experienced, and we have a lot of teenagers driving it. And I haven't, there's anything else on there. I think, do you have any questions for me?
Uh, I, I don't, I, I understand, uh, your concern. I guess this is something that we need to deal with, with, uh, the legislature, to see if we could give them to do some, make some changes in this area.
How about the state police enforcing the law?
I do know, and, you know, I do know that the state police had, and had tried to put even a little weight down on seventy-three. And soon as word gets out, you know, they don't come that way, or, you know, they take a different avenue. They also were using the road to get around that weigh station. They were going completely down. Now, what has also happened is, and you're, you're quite right, the one on Goshen Road right there, that road is basically gone. That's where the pilot, uh, station is. It is under, it's underground, I don't know.
They just, they just did some work on it this past week.
Oh, did they?
I was just down there yesterday.
Okay, but what happens is they put it, but then the weight just, you know, it just goes down. I know, and also, just so you all know, Mr. Martinelli has been so adamant. He has actually gotten out there in the mornings and filmed it and put it on Facebook, and so we're able to see. And what, the other problem is, if you look where they get off of sixty-eight and make that turn on Route seventy-three at the Morgantown Motel, they can't make the turn. So what happens is, they stop and back up. When they back up, that's what's also causing almost accidents.
I've seen that before, yeah.
Yeah, so it's, yeah, it's a real concern, and I know the people, and there's been a lot more developments, not only asking states, but.
Uh, did you get a copy of it?
Yeah. Yeah, there's a number of different developments that are going out there, and there's been an increase, and hopefully, I guess, you know. I know, you know, uh, his concern is real as is others, you know, along Route seventy-three. I think you ask, I think we need to take it to the County Commission Association to try and see if there's anything we can do. We did get a letter from the State Department that said that they were gonna reconsider, if you remember, fixing the road up and making it stronger. But it's on a list, we were told.
Right.
I've lived there for seventeen years.
Yes.
I wouldn't put any credence in them. They fixed that road, uh, very sporadically, and it doesn't stay fixed very long. Number, number one reason, because those trucks travel on it.
Yeah.
There are no edges to those roads.
Uh, we appreciate your input. I, I'm gonna ask, Kelly, if you pass that on to Al. In, in terms of, I would like to know, uh, from his position and possibly the Sher- Sheriff's Association. To, to deal, whether this is sort of a legislative issue that the various associations can band together on. Because I think it does create a lot of problems. I know from, from the Sheriff's Department creates problems as well as the general citizens, so we'll do that.
Firstly, I think the simplest solution would be for the, uh.
To lower the weight.
Enforce the regulations on sixty-eight, and there'd be no reason to avoid seventy-nine.
Right, that's true.
Thank you very much, I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, public, uh, any further public comment? Any further public comment? Okay, it's past ten-thirty, so we're gonna start the public hearing on county tow policy. Who do we have? There's the man. Come on in. Come on in, Tammy. Sit up right up front here, where we can all see you. Wave to the camera there, the camera's right behind you. Okay, uh, so. I'm gonna, it's, uh, the public hearing on accounting tow policy. I'm gonna open the public hearing. Mark, is there anything you want to present on it?
Uh, not at this time, no. From our earlier meeting, um, we have met with all the towing agencies. And they were aware that you would be setting up a public hearing at some point. I tell you, wanted to speak directly to you about that. There's maybe a few, actually, this is one that I see represented now, I mean, one from Russia.
Okay, is there, for, since this is being taped, could you explain basically how it works? For the general public out there that might be wondering what it's about?
What we have now is, is the nine-one-one center has separate tow lists for each police department, basically. And what we were wanting to do, instead of having, for the most part, different policies for each police department. Would be one policy that would be enacted under you. That everybody that goes through the nine-one-one center would have one list. One list and one policy, just to make it simpler for all of us to follow. I believe I did mention at the last meeting that there was a very recent Supreme Court ruling. That basically allowed the municipalities an out from the statute that charges you as the commission with adopting a list. For fair and equitable rotation through end licensed record companies. It provides them with an out due to, um, maybe their size or just the availability of storage facilities within their municipal limits. That they can use basically whomever they want. And the municipalities are aware of that, and when all of us met with the record companies. Prior to me meeting with you before, they were advised of that as well. And the municipalities may or may not join on, or even if they do, if they opt to go off of the list. Their, the Supreme Court ruling pretty much covers if they are allowed to do that in certain, certain circumstances.
But, but aren't they still required to do it in a fair and equitable fashion unless there's a compelling, uh, municipal interest that they're trying to advance?
And, and normally, it is for a safety reason and response time.
Right.
Is what the Supreme Court specifically addressed, um, if they have.
They can't just, they can't just do it because they want to favor, uh, a, a business in their community?
Well, the, the ruling that they actually mentioned and what the case was about was the City Bridge Board. They only use one record company, that's it. They contract under them and.
They, they, they are, they are, they argued for, but they argued it on the basis that it provided safer.
Right.
Safety concern.
I believe that record company is the only one that has a place of business within their city limits. There's storage facilities located there. That's why they chose them. The Supreme Court agreed. I didn't read verbatim, but that was a synopsis, that's the ruling. That why should we have to use other companies when they don't even have a place of business?
That would provide the services.
Right, right.
Okay. Okay, uh, now for public comment, uh, anyone that would like, we're, we're gonna start with anyone who'd like to speak in favor of it. Anyone like to speak opposed to it? Anyone like to speak in favor of the tow policy? Anyone like to speak of?
Okay.
Okay, or, or are you, uh, you're not sure which you're for or against?
Well, it's goodness pash.
Oh, okay, well, come on up, identify yourself. Give your name and address and, uh, and then you're free to, uh, make your presentation.
All right, my name is Jody Hunt. I'm with J and J Towing and Auto Repair. We reside at three eleven Riverside Avenue, West River. Kinda nervous, I'm not much for a public speaker.
That's okay. It's fine, you're on camera, but don't worry about it.
Put the pressure.
It's an awesome idea. It's great if we can only follow it. That list is only as good as the people using the list. It's not Mecca who gets out and says, okay, you know, we messed this up. The officers request whatever towing company they choose to request, or they go off the list. That's general. But there are some favoritism involved there, there really, there truly is. It says, um, this, the, I guess the police rotation and their code says it should be fair and equitable. Okay, meaning equitable, to be fair, just, impartial, or, or in prejudice. Partial meaning showing lack of favoritism. I'm sorry, when you're constantly calling the same towing company, it's a little bit favoritism. I mean, that's where I'll go back. So, that's a little niche here, trying to.
That's fine.
Every two years, we went through this. Every two years, we'd come in, we'd talk to Captain Ralston, all the towing companies come in, and we say, yeah, we're not gonna scan. Well, guess what? Everybody scans. There are scanners in every one of these trucks. iPhones, you have an app for scanners, and you can pick it up digitally. It's a free app. Anybody can get a scanner, you can get them on eBay for two hundred and fifty dollars, digitals. Brand new ones are four hundred to five hundred dollars. Every towing company has them in this town, don't care. I mean, that's just the way it is. If a towing company doesn't scan, as it's illegal for federal and state code, well, then they lose their interest. I mean, if you don't show up to make sure the officer's doing what he's doing, or the fact that you've got a really good officer who's gonna say, listen, we don't need your help, we appreciate your assistance, move on. Which most of the time, we always do. I'll sit there and help him clean up a wreck, it doesn't matter. I'll help him direct the traffic. If I can get that officer off the road faster to get him home to his family, I'm all for it. I don't care whether I get the wreck or not. But what I'm saying is.
Did you say it was, uh, 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 I'm sorry, I just wanted to make sure I'm still, did you say it was illegal to scan?
Yes, and it's supposed to be, there's a statute under federal law stating that it, you're not allowed to use, uh, scanners, police scanners, stuff for, for personal or gain. For business, things like that. It's supposed to be illegal to scan wrecks with hand scanners, police scanners, whatever.
For commercial advantage.
Correct, but it's done every day. I mean, that's just the way it is. So, I mean, we always talk about the complaints on scanning wrecks, things like that. We always bring up, well, certain officers using only certain towing companies. Well, how's that fair and equitable? I mean, it shows favoritism. But why do we even have a list if you're just gonna say, give me Acme Towing? Just give me this, give me that. And I last spoke with the Public Service Commission, you know, they said, well, you know, it's kinda weird how, you know, officers can say, give me such and such. Well, we have an owner's request for a reason. If they're unconscious and unable to make their own requests. Then apparently, like in the medical field, which I used to work as an EMT on the ambulance for many years in Mon County, Fairmont, and Clarksburg. We have implied consent. If they can't, then you go off the list. That's what the rotation's there for. When the basic person, anyone in this room wrecks their car, and they do an owner's request. They, and the officer shows, the officer's there, the record company shows up, and the officer says, do you care if you, you, you know, this record company takes this vehicle? No, I don't care. That's what they did down in Weston. The state police was there. They had a list at the time, they went off the list. Of information, you can look it up on the internet. Well, the officer did that, and then, um, the owner says, no, you know, go ahead and pull the tractor trailer up over the hill. They recovered the tractor trailer. Well, then, the owner of the tractor trailer company didn't like, it was an owner's request, he didn't like what his bill was. But we get owner's requests all the time, so. Well, it was eighteen thousand dollars to recover a tractor trailer that was one step over the hill. I don't know what took that vehicle to be recovered for eighteen thousand dollars, I have not a clue, and it was drivable after the incident. So, at that time, they said, well, that bill's too high. The state police requested the billing information, they requested this, that, dah dah dah. They couldn't do anything about it. When anyone in this room requests a towing company, and the police officer says, do you care if you take? No, they'll call an owner's request. No, I don't care. Well, then you're, you're not governed by the Public Service Commission. You're not governed, well, we can charge you. We can charge you ten thousand dollars just to tell you a little sportage or your Kia across the road. There's not a thing in this world.
Just by saying I don't care?
No, because it's an owner's request.
Well, that's what I mean. By saying, if I, if I'm the one, if it's my vehicle and I say, I don't, it, it, the officer says, can this towing company take it? And I say, I don't care, then you're saying that's consent, that they can bill me whatever I want, I'm not protected by the Public Service Commission?
That's correct, sir. That's under the Public Service Commission.
Keep my mouth shut, buddy.
So, that's why when these.
Yes, Bill.
Can I interject something here?
Yes, you may.
I, I'd like to ask the gentleman, are you in favor of the ordinance or are you opposed to it?
I'm in favor of it if it's used correctly, sir.
Yeah, but that's, that's, can't be the issue. The, the issue has to be, are you in favor of the ordinance, are you opposed to it? Now, how it's applied is entirely separate handling than what we're doing today.
Okay, I thought this was a public speaking on, on the.
It's a public hearing whether or no we should pass this ordinance.
Correct, okay.
Is there anything, I, I, I guess he wants you to get to the point, is there anything in the ordinance you would change? Other than the fact that your position is you're speaking in favor of the ordinance and urging that it be utilized properly?
As long as it's utilized properly, yeah, the way it's supposed to be, fair and equitable, there's no problem. But you're still putting the public at risk if it's not running properly because you're gonna constantly have these towing companies scanning wrecks. Next thing you know, or you're gonna have a twelve-year-old kid hit, or you're gonna have a family hit on the side of the road because you got a record company coming.
Well, that, that may be another issue that we may need to address with, uh, the sher- sheriffs and the state police and all, and enforcement of that. I mean, if it's illegal to scan, then maybe we need to enforce it.
But, but, yeah, if that's a federal statute, it very well could be, I'm just not part of it.
But my, here's my question, if I'm in a wreck and, say, you show up. I'm gonna take the first one because, you know, you're right there, and, and I don't understand how that would be moving away from the actual law because.
Protection of the Public Service Commission.
Yeah, only because, I mean, say, say I wanted Vic, but you showed up. If, if Vic takes twenty more minutes to get there, that'd be stupid for me. I, that's why I would take you. That's why, that's why I'm a little confused.
Is, as far as the scanning issue?
Yeah.
That Jody was talking about?
Yeah.
Our current policy now.
Okay.
That, that we operate under has a stipulation, um, that everybody's been operating under. The state's no tow company shall respond to any situation requiring law enforcement. Such as a motor vehicle accident until said company has been notified by Mecca to respond to such situation.
So that is the actual how the law reads, but.
Here's, here's what Jody is, is speaking of, which he is correct on some points. State police cannot commit locally to any policy because they're a state agency. On county cannot just go with you guys, so they have no list. They have officers that do what they want, or sometimes they notify Mecca and say, give us the next one off of the sheriff's office list. They don't have any, any policy that they operate under, and it's probably different in every county.
So we can't enforce this?
I've been told by the record companies, it's a fifty-fifty chance.
Right.
Whether they could get that call or not, because even if our guys follow the list to a T. There's a fifty-fifty chance because we rotate calls with the state police in the county. They may get the call, or we may get the call, if state police get the call, they may have a good chance of getting the accident. Because they don't have a rotation list that they have, or were supposed to.
Okay.
Is there, is there any way we could negotiate?
They actually.
The state troopers at the state level?
At the, I don't believe so, because they've actually been present at our meetings with all the tow companies. And their detachment sergeants have said they are not allowed by Charleston to commit to any policy.
Well, then maybe we need to go to Charleston.
Yeah, that could.
Maybe we need to take this up again, another issue.
And also send a recommendation that we're requesting.
It, it makes it difficult.
Yeah.
For them and for us.
Because, because the, the whole purpose of a towing policy is to prevent the opportunity for corruption. That's the purpose of a towing policy, where an officer is actually getting kicked back for calling the same tow company over and over again. That's the whole purpose of why the law was written. So if the state police are, aren't willing to abide by the local policy, then, like you said, it's just a fifty-fifty chances to whether. There's corruption going on in the county or not.
Yes.
And those things happen in our county right now. As a towing company owner, I know. When you have an officer comes up and says, hey, you helped my son out with a car, I'll give you some wrecks. Duh, I mean, it happens. Every day it happens.
That's illegal, it's corruption.
Yeah, it does, and that's why this list, it needs to be set in example. Okay, if it's an auto, if anything goes through Mon County, and it's an auto accident, traffic stop, nobody scans traffic stops because there's no money in it. But by God, you let a wreck go down there right to it, you let a tractor trailer roll over, oh, I'll be right there, it's thirty thousand dollars. You know what I mean? And.
Okay, well, I, we, we appreciate, uh, your information, uh, but, uh, but towing policy, you're in favor of it?
Correct, sir.
Thank you very much.
Sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Any, uh, anyone else would like to speak on the towing poli- policy issue? For or against? Yes, please stand up, identify yourself, give your address, and, uh, tell, tell us upfront whether you're for or against it.
I'm against it.
You're against it, okay. Uh, identify yourself so she can write it down.
Okay. Vic Solomon, thirteen oh one University Avenue.
Go ahead.
I really don't even know much about what's going on today. I just seen that little piece was in the paper, so I thought I would come up. And the papers that I did get off of him whenever he had a, a meeting. Said there that, uh, that was only for the sheriff's department and not the state police.
No, that's what he just said.
Yeah, state police didn't have a list. Well, they're the first ones that started the list. No one else had a list. They called us up one day, years ago, and said, we're gonna make a list. Now, uh, about this scanning, when there's a wreck on a four lane like sixty-eight or seventy-nine, three-fourths of the vehicles are already totaled. So, does it really matter if there's an owner's request? I mean, you're not gonna drive the car again.
Well, this, this doesn't, this doesn't have anything to do with the scanning. He brought it up as an issue, I just wanted to know what he wanted, but.
But I'm saying, the officers get out there and they try to ask if you prefer a certain tow company. Well, if it's on the four lane with all that traffic, there should be no, uh, owner's request on a four lane. Just as soon as that officer gets there, he sees. Just as soon as that officer gets there, he sees that car needs towed, you just radio in immediately for the next wrecker on the list. You get a wreck on the interstate and he'll be backed up ten mile in no time. Or why doesn't nine-one-one, when they dispatch an officer, someone says that car's on its top, which I've heard that on the scanner many times around the Ocean exit. Why don't they send a wrecker right then?
So, actually, you sound like you're in favor of the tow policy, but you want MEC to just do it right then and there?
Right.
And, and, so you're, you're opposed to the owner's consent, uh, part of the tow pop?
Yes.
On the four lanes?
Because most of those people, uh, on the four lanes aren't from Mon County, they don't know any tow companies.
Right.
One guy over there in Westover had a tractor and trailer, he turns around in shop and save because he got lost. He turns around, tears the light pole out on the man's property, Mr. Micholi's. Well, he was lost, comes across a scanner, owner's request for so-and-so, well, how's an owner's request if he's lost? I mean, it's just not unfair and honest.
Yeah, that, so actually, you're in favor of the tow policy, but you just believe that it ought to be more restrictive.
Right, anyway, I need to sit down and read it, and then everybody jumped up and said you have to be open from eight to five, well, it's not a communist country. If a man calls me for a tow truck, I live a half a mile from my shop, he doesn't care, as long as I get there, he doesn't care if I leave University Avenue or Westover. And all this, and then it says you gotta have bathrooms, but I don't have that many customers, I only may have three or four customers a day. But none of these places uptown will let you use their bathrooms, they tell you it's for employees only.
Yeah, employees are, well, most, most places, yeah, you're right.
My biggest problem I'm having, every time I do something, I got somebody from the public service calling me saying, you can't do this, and you can't do that. If you got your own policy, then why do we need the public service? There's no reason for a wrecker to even be underneath the Public Service Commission. One officer called me for a tilt bed, well, I went out there with a tilt bed, I billed the guy for, for a tilt bed. Public service called me up, said you can't take that tilt bed unless the owner requests a tilt bed. I said, well, I took what I was told to take, then he says you can't put it inside unless it's an owner's request. Well, if I got a new car down there with a windshield knocked out of it, and I think you're gonna fix it and a rainstorm's coming, I think that's my own judgment. I mean, why should the wrecker's even be underneath Public Service Commission? They don't set our fees, all they do is give you a form, they tell you fill that form out, and you charge what's on the form, you're setting your own fees. If you're up here illegally parked in somebody's parking lot, and that guy calls me for a wrecker, you guys ought to have just set up. Your car will be towed to so-and-so tow company, and like it is in Baltimore, great big letters. Your wrecker bill will cost you six hundred dollars, so you better think before you park, that's all you need to put up there. Mo' Romans is right above me, there was a guy got out, he looked all around, I was watching him. Locked his car up, went down B church, because there's no parking down there for those apartments. He comes back, that foreigner there that runs the place, old Joe, I call him, anyway, he had a wrecker upper hook to the guy. When the guy come running, said he had permission to park there, while I was watching him, he kept looking as he locked his door, went around the corner, looked backwards. I mean, that's called a third party because he wasn't there. Well, the thing is, this third party is still on our rates that we sent the form in, and why should there be a, a, a third party? That guy and anybody else knows whether they're allowed to park in that parking lot or not. One guy, I gotta call up on First Street, I went up and towed his car out, I got hooked up to him, he come running next door. Standing there, big muscle-bound guy, we said, we're standing there arguing for a half hour. I told him, I said, sir, don't you be back in this parking lot again. Next morning, I go up there at nine o'clock, his car's in the same spot, these people around here don't care, so why should they?
Well, that doesn't have to do with the tow. We're sure, you should have gone off.
No, not really, because that's what the public service is made up of, it's not made up for an owner's request, it's made up for a third party, well, these third parties know.
I, I, I think you bring up one question, and, and I just don't know, I, that you just brought up. Must maintain restroom facilities for the convenience of the public, is there a reason why?
That is a change from.
I mean, because that's a legitimate question.
Two things that he did mention there, the first one about, um, business hours, from eight AM to five PM. Each Monday through Friday, except legal holidays, that's the current policy we're operating under now, it's been in there for years.
Okay.
The restroom.
Yeah.
Is part of the combined that anybody that's on Morgantown City Police's list is already operating by. That's part of their current policy.
Oh, really?
That they wanted to see in there, because this is a combination of.
Oh, okay, I see what you're saying, okay.
City of Morgantown.
But if an individual or anybody goes into a city police department and wants to use the bathroom, they tell them no?
Well, there's a public.
Yeah, it's.
It's for customers, or it's convenience to the customer, that doesn't mean.
Something happens.
It's not a public restroom facility, it's, it's if someone's in there. In, in your, waiting on the vehicle, or, 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 a customer of yours in there. And they have to use a restroom, then you allow them to use your restroom.
But then that should be also for the whole town, not just for the wrecker services I'm trying to get at. I was at Family Dollar Saturday morning, lady was standing in line behind me with a little kid, little kid had to go to the bathroom, there was a customer, they told him no. Said employees only, that's what they're all.
We don't have control over Dollar, uh, Dollar General.
It's like at the whole county.
Hmm, what's that?
I said, that's the way people operate in whole county, they all tell you no.
Well, I, I, I understand, I understand. But I guess this was in order to bring Morgantown in.
The city and the county working together, that was the compromise that you came up with.
This was a compromise, this wasn't in our policy before.
Right.
But I'm saying, if we go underneath your policies and stuff, then why do we have to be underneath the Public Service Commission?
Well, that's.
Well, again, that's another thing we may, we may wanna take down there, I, I, uh, maybe this whole thing needs to be visited, uh. Closely down there in Charleston, how it's operated, because the whole purpose of this law, as I said before, is to eliminate the, the opportunity. For corruption, that's what it's there for, Public Service Commission's supposed to exist for the same reason. But if we're working at cross purposes, then maybe that needs to be dealt with down in Charleston, but that doesn't necessarily address. What we're trying to address today, whether we should adopt this policy.
Well, I've always tried that, years ago, I called the public service, they said they have nothing to do with anything like that. All they're there is to regulate the price only, and nothing else.
Appreciate that, I, I always say, never say die, though.
But I wanna tell you one more thing.
If you give, if you give up, uh, you'll never succeed.
Uh, uh, one more thing, though, it was Gobles, I think, in Grafton, that took somebody to court, and that came out in the paper about. You weren't allowed to scan, that it was a federal offense. And Paul Gobles towed, but the thing was, uh, it was a tractor and trailer that was hung up in the deep snow. And they thought the fee was too high, so they complained to the public service, well, this guy, this was years ago. All that wrecker driver did, since they got him out, went to pay phone, those states, they had a lot of pay phones, and called that company and gave them the bill. Well, that trucking company wasn't even from West Virginia, they're back in their own state, their state don't have no public service to watch over them. So, why are we worried about them when they come to West Virginia? Here, they contact the Public Service Commission, the public service man told me, said, well, we had three lawyers. Looked at that bill for two days, and we found a two-dollar mistake. Now, to me, they're just a waste of a taxpayer's dollar.
That's probably about six thousand dollars worth of legal fees.
And the old boy still lives right there in Charleston, he retired from the Public Service Commission as a millionaire, and all he did. All he did was watch the tow truck drivers.
There you go, thank you, Vic. Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, I really appreciate if the county commission even think about allowing towing companies to come in. I know this is just, I, I misunderstood, I thought we were gonna talk about the policy. But if you would let us to come in and just talk about what goes on within the towing community here in Mon County, and how it affects the state.
So, is your request that we delay action on this until we set up a work session with the tow companies?
Or, or.
Captain Rolson, what do you think about that request?
It's, we're here just to make it operate better for everyone. Delay, I have no objection to a delay if you see fit with that.
No, I'm, I'm asking, I, I understand what you're trying to get, I'm asking what you're, you're thinking.
The only, the only question I have is, we have a policy, but yours is more of implementation and clarification. I don't know whether we wanna have the policy first, pass it, but then have a work session with you all, come in to try and clear up those specific issues.
Implementation issues, yeah.
Yeah, I think the policy is just and correct, it's, it's off, I mean, it's the way it should be.
Right.
It is correct, I appreciate what Mr. Ross and Captain Ross has put together, and, you know, the other agencies have come about to do this. I meant no disrespect or any offense against any of the others, but there's a lot of issues within this community that local citizens in this town doesn't even realize. And that's what we need to get out.
So, you got a request that you delay us passing the policy, you just requested a, a work session where we bring all the.
And clarification of those issues.
And, and deal with the implementation.
Yeah.
Uh, that, that would, that would be good, and, and that would strengthen anything we take to Charleston, if you wanna take some of these issues to Charleston. Uh, because I, I think, you know, a, a simple order from the, the, the head of the state police, or from the governor. Can solve a lot of the local problems here, on, on this issue.
Victor, thanks.
Mayor, mayor? Uh, yeah, I'm in favor of the ordinance, uh, we have a similar ordinance in Westover, have had for a while. And the reason that we implemented our, implemented our ordinances was because there wasn't a county tow list.
Okay.
Um, I do think that, uh, Victor and, uh, Jody both have good points. Which I'm sure everybody in this room's aware, that, uh, there is compromises sometimes, I mean, you know, that's something that maybe you guys, when you do have your next, um. Work session or whatever, you wanna talk about this, is figure out a way that you can deal with the complaints from the other wrecker's, the other tow companies. Because there are some tow companies out there, they're, they're being favored by, for whatever reason, I wouldn't stand here and, I mean, I have suspicions, but that's all they are. I don't, I couldn't put a number on it or a reason for it. But the other, the other thing too, I think you might wanna look at is that the paragraph under eligibility requirements. Where they speak to the must think, must maintain an outside storage facility, the size and everything, this is, uh. The only thing that we added to this, we added that the fences be covered. And the reason, there's two reasons for that, well, the main reason is that it's a requirement by the Public Service Commission as well, they don't really enforce that. But, uh, it, it, it lowers the, uh, crime rate, people breaking in, they, they can't see the car in there, they can't see what they're gonna get. And the other reason was that, uh, we've had, uh, people that have died in wrecks. And have been, have driven by these tow companies, and their car that their loved one had died in was visible because there wasn't anything. And that's, that's caused some hardships over the years, but it is in the, uh, requirements of the PSC when it comes to the outside storage. So, you may wanna consider that as well.
Thank you.
Let's say, one more thing.
Yes, sir, one more thing.
I think you just stopped the scanning, everything is following line pretty good, though, true.
We stopped the scanning?
Yes.
We have to, we have to get a federal agent out here to, to arrest, uh, these people, or?
The, both policies actually now prevent scanning. There are a lot of issues that we've come up trying to hold that back. We have one of the arguments that's been made in the past, several wrecker company employees. Or EMTs, remember, or volunteer fire departments, when we visited this as a group a few years ago. You come into the situation where, well, do we expect somebody to may be able to render aid to drive right by a traffic accident? When they may be able to help somebody? I can see that point, but then down the road, that turns into the soliciting. At the scene, once everybody's okay, you know, we've had instances of that over and over again. It's a hard thing to.
That doesn't go to skin, does it?
Oh, yes.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Everybody's always driving by.
Yes.
Oh, I was just driving by, oh, okay, I got it, I was driving by, yeah, all right, yeah.
Yeah.
I was in the neighborhood, uh, I understand.
Well, I, I, what I'd like to do, uh, is, I'm, I'm gonna.
Well, let me, let me see, is there any, any further, uh, uh, comments from the public, on the public hearing? Hearing none, I close the public hearing, now it's, uh, open for discussion among the commissioners.
I, I'd like to move.
And, and any further questions you might have for Captain Rolson?
I would like to move forward on the county tow policy with, and get this in place. And then come back and address the issues at a later time, which would be to hear what specifically the issues are, at like a work session. Because I think there's three or four different issues that you've brought up, and see if there's anything that we can do, whether in the county or whether we need it at the state. So, I move that we endorse the, uh, Mon County tow policy.
Let me ask a question, uh, if I may.
Sure.
I, I guess this is on the second, uh, the eligibility requirements, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. The ninth, uh, uh, the ninth paragraph where it says blah, 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 encircled by a fence.
Yes.
Uh, I think the mayor was suggesting that we add covered fence to that, is that correct, mayor?
Paragraph that he was addressing.
Yeah.
That's right. And it's, 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 uh, it's not just about the public service.
That, that's for inside storage facility, the paragraph before is for outside storage facility, he was talking about us outside storage facility. And, and, and he's, and what he's suggesting that it be a covered fence. That doesn't mean covered over the top, that means that it be a blocking fence, visibly blocking fence. Is there a problem with that, uh, captain?
The, you, are you talking about the top of it physically covered?
No, no.
No, just the size, so you can't see it.
We have that in a couple of places in Westover, and it's actually in the, uh, Public Service Commission rules, they just don't enforce it, they require that. So, if you check that, you can find that.
Vic, Jody's out of major expense for you guys?
I don't know.
Uh, we went through this before with the city west there, which I appreciate what they were doing, trying to keep the property looking good and things like that. Um, it is extremely expensive if you're using the aluminum slats, Summers Towing has it, I mean, you can invest thirty thousand dollars in it, but it'll break a company, especially a small company. So, what I propose to the city is that you can go on eBay, and you can get this mesh, it's fifty feet long, I think it's six foot high. I think it's like eighty-nine dollars a roll.
Just put it.
You wrap it around, you zip tie to it, every once in a while it breaks down, you just zip tie again, and you go about your business. You put it on the inside of the fence, it's all good, and you can, you know, add to it or take it off, it's not hard, it rolls off just like a tar. And it's, it's see-through, the air can blow through it, it's got like an eighty-five percent, some type of visibility, there's only a certain amount you can look through. But it is.
So, you don't see that as a problem?
No, it has attitude to me.
And you would agree that it was a public service requirement, they just don't enforce it?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
But there's a lot of things that are not enforced that are supposed to be carried.
How about you just put it on the front where a piece of.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's, I mean, that's, that's where it would go.
The area where.
It would go where it's visible to the public.
Yeah, that'd be fun.
Uh, encircled by a, what, encircled by a, uh. Covered, that's, uh, uh, on the side, it's visible to.
Yeah, you probably have to word it to something to reduce vis- visibility to the general public.
Public.
Content, something of that nature, yeah.
Not sure the height requirements on the fence, but.
Yeah.
If you kinda keep it at six foot, it helps out a lot, but if you gotta go higher, that's fine, but the bigger the fence is, the more hits into, because you gotta pay even a larger amount of money.
Yeah, we don't have a height requir- we don't have a height requirement on the fence.
Yeah.
It's, it, it's just a. That, did, did you figure out the, how to word that?
Just covering a fence to reduce visibility to general public?
Yeah, a covered fence to reduce visibility to the public.
Say a, a certain height, no more than six feet, or?
Nah, I, I just leave it, I just leave it backed up.
Okay.
The way it's worded now, just sufficient height.
Okay, and that you could work out, yeah.
A little higher than the car.
Yeah, exactly.
Thank you.
Move that without amendment.
Will you withdraw your, your motion, and then make a motion on the amendment?
Yeah, okay, move to amend the ordinance to add as just stated.
Uh, okay, this, I'll second the motion on the amendment, this is in favor of the, uh, for against the amendment. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Uh, motion passed, so now we can take a motion on the whole policy as amended.
Right, move, uh, the tow policy as amended.
Uh, I'll second, I have a motion to second, all, uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, uh, opposed, a motion passed.
Alvin, let me make one comment about this, if I may.
Yes, please.
Uh, you know, as, as I listen to, to all the comments and everything else, uh, you know, the tow policy. Uh, it appears like there's, no one really has a problem with the tow policy, it's how it's applied and utilized. And, and regretfully, it sounds to me, from what I'm hearing, it's some of, and I, and I say that with emphasis. It's some of the, the towing companies that don't comply and are permitted to do that by law enforcement.
Well, so, yes, I, I would agree that, uh, you know, i- if, if. Every, i- if all the towing companies played by the rules, we probably wouldn't even need a towing policy.
Right, and, and, and it seems to me like what we really lack in this policy is enforcement of the policy, of the ordinance.
Yeah, and I think that was the request, that was the request of, uh, of, I'm sorry, Jody.
Yeah.
J- Jody, uh, to have a work session with all the tow companies, and, and the, and the, the sheriff's department. To go over, uh, uh, exactly how we're gonna enforce and, and, and what we might need to do at the state level to. uh, exactly how we're gonna enforce and 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 what we might need to do at the state level to to make it even fairer.
What what I would like to do is suggest to the towing companies as a challenge, what should the consequence be and how could you define, uh, an offense that would warrant a con- consequence?
That's, that's a good question.
That's a challenge, uh, for further discussion on this ordinance. What what constitute violation of it and how are you gonna enforce it?
That that that's what he would like, uh, like you all to come to the work session with the ideas on that.
The issue is not really with the towing companies. It's the fact that the officers have allowed this to go on and that if you don't scan because the officers aren't using the list the way it's set up, it's only, the list is only as good as the officer using it.
Well, and it's also only as good as the tow company complies with it.
Correct. Yes, very correct, sir.
Well, I think what we could do is not only, you know, use what Bill said, plus also if you could come and ask those tow companies to come with a specific three to five concerns and solutions. So then we, rather than we talk all around, we actually have specific items. Not that the sheriff's department will make a decision right then, but then we have an idea of what to work on and what we could work on, what we could deal with here and what we'd have to deal with at the state level. And that way then we, we, you know, we can get some compromise and then we probably would have a second meeting after we figured out how to try and resolve some of those issues. So that's how I would recommend it. Add a work session a couple of weeks from now, so give them some time to think about this.
Should we have that go through Captain Ross and Jody had it down in the.
Yes.
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 Yes. It doesn't have to be, yeah, yeah.
I I I think, I think that, uh, uh, two big issues that I see, and I agree with what Bill and Tom Bush said on this. But the two big issues I I see that could really change the whole complexion here is to somehow enforce the scanner issue and get the state police to comply with our our rotation list. If you do that, I think then then the other issues sort of fall into a lower level of of implementation. Would you agree with that, Captain Ross?
Okay.
Okay. All right, that's what we'll do.
Can I say one more thing, sir?
One more thing?
One more thing.
One more thing. Yes, go ahead.
Not because the mayor, mayor's here, but Westover has a good policy. I don't hear any of the tow companies complaining or arguing amongst themselves.
Well, that's because Mayor doesn't allow anyone complaining.
There, they don't really want to scan in Westover. Everything's worked out good in Westover. Their policy's been good.
The same as the city of Morgantown. They run a tight knit little policy. Actually, on the scanner the other day, I heard a cop say, hey, give me the next two records off to your list, Mecca. Mecca complied. The officer said, cancel it. I have two records that showed up. One of their supervisors got on and says, hey, you cannot do that. You will use the next two records. And that's the problem we're having. You guys are just allowing these guys to show up and take cars.
And that's what we'll discuss and clarify. Yeah.
The policy that they're addressing, West River's policy and the city Morgantown's policy is basically this policy.
Right.
No, so we just, we just adopted, uh, what they're praising.
Yeah.
Yes.
Man, I never got that much praise in a single day. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
They're figuring out a date right now, so we'll. September twenty fourth at what time? Okay. Yeah, three o'clock. But it will be down at the sheriff's department.
Why don't we, why don't we do it, uh, October eighth? Isn't that the night we have our our community meeting down there?
Soon we have it.
So we could go down there to do this at three o'clock and then and then just stay for the.
Go get something to eat. Okay, yeah.
I might add, if you let Vic come, he'll be there past the time to start the meeting.
Well, I'll make Mr. Ross and see if he can get.
Let, 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 let it go. Let, is it?
Okay.
It it, is it all right to, we have this on October eighth?
October the eighth.
Whatever is your convenience.
Okay, let's do October the eighth.
Let's do do it October eighth because then we can, you know, we can start at three o'clock and then have a little break and then we can stay for the meeting.
Yeah, exactly. So we could just. Okay.
Is that three AM or three PM?
That's three AM.
Only if you're gonna, only if you're gonna set up the weights for the trucks that are gonna come through here.
You better leave those truckers alone. They won't vote you back in office.
Well, well, I I I hear that, uh, one of the suggestions the mayor had is that they were gonna put the weight station right here beside the courthouse, where they're gonna weigh all the trucks, getting rid of those parking spots there.
I'm sure Citizens Bank and us are gonna.
That's gonna, that's gonna be really great for for the courtroom, isn't it?
You did, yes. That was stated as one of the suggestions.
I mean, you're, you're off this line.
Right. They they're gonna, that was the suggestion of the mayor that they're gonna do with these parking spots here and put a weight station right here next to the courthouse.
Mm-hmm.
That's, that's interesting. Okay, uh.
Thank you for your input.
We had, we had our public comments. Diane, do you have anything further? Mike, do you have anything for us? All right now. Jamie, you have anything?
Just one thing.
Just one thing. Yes, sir.
Uh, Fall Frenzy for the Tennessee Media is here up at Chestnut Ridge Park this weekend from twelve to three. It's a, you know, gathering for the kids and families and everything to go up there and have a good time at Chestnut Ridge Park this Saturday, twelve to three.
Very good. Uh, okay, that's.
Move for adjournment?
Uh, second, I have a motion to second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned. Thank you.